We moved to item number, um, is 729. Let's move to item number 13. On our agenda, we'll have to wait that one minute. As the time comes up, because
We can begin, Mayor.
We can begin, okay, oh, great. Item number 13 is involving redistricting. And I know Yvonne had testified earlier, so hang on in there, we're doing it right now. And maybe we can have a staff report?
Sure, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before I turn this over to Ken Chalkings from, our demographer from National Demographics Corporation, I just wanted to let you know that this is the second of four public hearings that the city will be conducting on redistricting. And I want to note that although the state, the county, and most recently, the school district have gone through this process, these are the early stages for the city and our timeline is slightly different. We do need to adopt the maps before the April 19th deadline, but we have advanced time to do that within the next few months. And Ken will actually go over some of the increased outreach efforts that we've been doing. And as I mentioned, tonight is going to be the second public hearing, and we are looking for additional public input on communities of interest, and also some direction from this council on the criteria to consider when drafting maps. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
And Lucy, just before you do, you said April 19th, is it at April 17th the deadline? Or I'm looking at the staff report.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Okay, thanks, go ahead, thank you.
Indeed, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council and staff and the public. Happy to be here for the second time. I was going to say, Ms. LaRosa, I'm glad you said what you said, this is the time, this is one of the times. We have workshops, we have lots of places for you to engage, and that's really what we want to hear. And secondly, I must say, I don't know if we need to do this, I think the council should go to Kelly Kid's, you know, shop and just sort of hand him everything and let him create the map. It sounds like that's, that's what he could do, you know? I was, I was engaged, I'm going to go to that store. My, my role here is to go through and try and frame, as I did last time, the, the sort of parameters of this effort. Give you some stuff about what's gone on since and some feedback since you had some comments last time. And then quite frankly, to, to listen, this is not easy, and as Lucy suggested, look, this, this is going on in thousands and thousands of jurisdictions around the country. This is not simple stuff, and it's critical. And I must say, I'll go to the next slide, and we can look at all of the stuff that you've done so far. You happen to have hit with all of this outreach, the, there's, there are workshops that we held, there's another one coming on the 31st. You have a website, you've done social media, you've done press releases, there's all of this stuff listed. You happen to have done it in the middle of the holidays, oh, and by the way, there's a pandemic going on. And so, Ms. LaRose, we hear you and we feel you, all the jurisdictions I am going to, but people are busy, they have the holidays, they're kind of dealing with masks and kids and all that stuff, and it's really tough to come out for this. I suspect if you decided to move a stop sign somewhere, you'd get more people out. But this really is important stuff, and it's, it's critical. And so, we're going to do everything, I know the Trepey Smith team is going to do everything and work with Lucy to continue to reach out and get as many voices as possible. In the end, all of this lands at the dais for you all to make a decision about what the map should look like. And so, we'll do our best to create maps that you can choose from, as will the public, and then it's going to be up to you before the April date. Thank you, for the next slide. This is where we were, again, you were right into the holidays, but you did the right thing. You have the workshop, you had the first public hearing, this is the second. There's another workshop planned on a Saturday, we're trying to, that's really smart, to mix it up on weekday evenings and weekends, because people have different calendars and different schedules, it's really, really smart. Some jurisdictions don't do that, and they, they see the attendance. The deadline to submit draft maps for the March 2nd is February 19th. That gives us time to process the maps, get them into order, get them back to the city clerk's office, and then get them posted in time for you to, to, to look at and, and have official. Oh, I'm sorry, Lucy just sent it to me. The 31st is on Monday, and my apologies, not on Saturday, it is on a Monday. But it is good to mix and match Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, different times during the week, my apologies. So you can see the deadline for the March 2nd, and then go down a little bit, the deadline to submit maps for the, by March 7th is for the March 16th, that gives us nine days to process and post, and then by the fourth public hearing, and then you have April 17th. So it's not a crunch, there were some jurisdictions that had a much more of a crunch, but you do have some time to be thinking about some stuff. Next slide, please interrupt me at any point, and that you have questions. This is the most significant slide, at least from my perspective, it lays out really the rules, in particular for councils, city councils and counties. The federal law that, that frames what you're going to do has three really components to it. The first is equal population, one person, one vote. Every 10 years, the census is taken, we count all of the people, and then you divide by the amount of jurisdictions you have, in your case, it's five, and then that is your target size of your district. To the extent that you can get within 10% from the highest to the lowest, then you are presumed constitutional. And so, all of the maps, you'll hear us use something called population balance. That's the first and most important fundamental thing that you have to do, is to make sure that districts are of relatively equal population. You'll see when the maps start coming in, if you like a particular concept and it's out of population balance, you can say to us, we like that concept, and we would like to actually see if we can get it within population balance. Secondly, the Federal Voting Rights Act. This one basically states that you cannot draw maps that dilute the potential for a protected class to get an elected representative. It doesn't mean that you, the protected classes linguistic, ethnic groups, but you, you can't guarantee, of course, a seat, but you can't be seen drawing a map that slits a community and dilutes their potential, or if they have the potential for two, carves off a piece and, and pushes it into one as opposed to two. That's called cracking or packing. The second part is, you're, you're similarly not allowed to, I'm sorry, the third point, the second one of the racial part, you're not allowed to create circuitously a map that looks like you're gathering for a protected class. And again, I think I told you last time from the word gerrymandering, it's a district that looks like a salamander that was approved by Governor Jerry of Massachusetts. You can't do either of those, you can't dilute, and you can't purposely go and create a district for a protected class or a racial group. In the middle, the California Criteria for Cities came from the California Fair Maps Act, which was recently enacted, and this is important, it was not in place when you drew the maps earlier, that your current maps were not drawn with this California Fair Maps Act in place. They have four main components. The first is maps need to be contiguous, they need to connect. If they are not contiguous, the map is not legal. So you have to have districts that are connected. Secondly, neighborhoods, if I asked people in Pasadena or South Pasadena or others where your neighborhoods are, some people could point to a physical or geographical area, and, and most people would nod and say, yes, that's a neighborhood. Communities of interest is a little bit more of a term of art. You can define communities of interest however you want to. The key is to understand that if this gets challenged in court, you need to be able to defend the map that you created based on the contiguity, the communities of interest, and it will define the others. The communities of interest could be homeownership, it could be socioeconomic status, it could be, as the school district did, school attendance zones. You could use all kinds of things, but it is up to the legislative body to determine what your priorities are in terms of communities of interest. Third, easily identified boundaries that could be natural or not. You can have streets, you can have parks, you can have shopping centers, you can have all sorts of things that either define or don't define, is, in other words, there are freeways and highways in other jurisdictions, and people say that that divides a community, very, very familiar to South Pasadena, I know, or that people go under a freeway, or around a park, or over a shopping center. But it's up to you to say, we define these communities of interest in this district based on these definable boundaries, this community of interest and the contiguity. The last is more visual, it's compactness. You don't want to see a district that jumps over one group or one area to get to another. Sometimes you have to go around certain things that don't have any people in them, or if there's a county area that's within the city, you have to go around it. But a compactness, again, you'll know it when you see it, and all four of those need to be considered, and again, they will, they will balance against each other. You can't get 100% of all of them, and they all have to comport with the federal elections or the federal laws for redistricting. The third column we usually list, is, they're traditional, they don't have to follow them. Minimizing voter shifted to different elections simply means you don't want to draw a map that moves people from, that would have voted in 2022 into 2024, if you can. You don't want to carve out people who are already elected and into, that represent a district. You don't want to carve them out, if you can avoid it, based on the other state and federal laws. This was mentioned last time, the future population growth with the RINA restrictions. If you know that there is going to be growth, and, and this is important, not just know or think, you got to have a pretty solid grounding in that there is, whether the permits have been pulled, you've already planned for it, you know it's going to be there. And again, even then, you don't know how many people are going to be there, but you're able to consider that if you know that with good measure. And again, preserving the core of existing districts, if you determine that you like the way the map feels, and you're going to try and keep it within the guidelines of the state and federal. Again, this is going to play a part in South Pasadena significantly, because this, the middle column was not in play when you drew your maps last time. The last part there is you cannot discriminate on behalf of a political party, which is where actually the term gerrymandering came in 200-plus years ago. Let me stop and see if there are any questions or comments there.
Council members, any questions? I, I can't quite see everybody with hands up, let me look.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
I don't see any hands up, I'll just go down the list. Mayor Protem, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
No.
Councilmember Zinimer?
No, not that, it's fine.
Councilmember Mahmoud? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ken, next.
We'll go back, we'll go back to the presentation and the next slide. Please. This is your current district, and you can see, I'm going to talk about this a little bit, but you can see how you tried to get, I believe, a significant amount in the center so that you had representation of various parts of the city. And again, districts four and five are a little bit more quote-unquote compact, but these, this is a compact map, and it, and it is contiguous, right? They're all connected and they're all touching. The communities of interest is the issue where you're going to get into a conversation here, because it is clear that the north-south districts two and three cover a lot of different communities of interest as defined, and I'll, and again, I'll talk about that, because you did ask about what the logic was last time in 2017. Next slide, please. Is the numbers. Here are the numbers of your current map. We'll go to that far right column where it says total and the percent deviation. So technically, you're outside the 10%. Again, when you drew the map, you probably were in, and there was growth and/or retreat of population, and you can see in District 2, you're negative 6, and in District 3, you're positive 5. Together, I'm sorry, yes, that, that makes 11.74, 81, rather. So you are outside the bounds, and you need to get that within 10 and as close to zero as possible. Sounds easy, it's not. When you start to draw maps and you carve in one place, that will push to another in what we call the ripple effect. You have a much more extensive list beyond the voter turnout, I will call your attention to the following. Total population is total population. It's not citizens, it's not age, it's not, it's all people. But when you're looking at the potential for dilution of a protected class, you then want to drop to the second row, which is citizen voting age, where you can see, for example, in District 3, the total population of percent Hispanic is 24, but the citizen voting age is 19. So you could potentially have a very large population growth, but the citizen voting age could drop precipitously. You want to make very, 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 very much sure that you are looking at both of those at play when it, when it comes to a protected class. There's voter turnout in, in two different elections, and again, in the stats that you have, it goes all the way down, that includes economic factors, and includes homeownership, et cetera. But right now, you need to do something with this map purely on the population balance. Next slide. Tonight, we, we really, really need to get feedback, and you got a lot of it. Trust me, I looked at, you'll see a slide here. You got a lot from your surveys, many jurisdictions don't do surveys. They just do the public hearings and they invite people to come, or they just do social media and push out. You, you got some good feedback, and stuff that you all are going to have to think about and either prioritize, or, or discount, or, or balance, or weight as best you can. The real hard part is the next slide. Again, neighborhoods is one thing, but communities of interest is, is, is again, more of a term of art. And I would have you think hard about what you really, really are trying to get represented in the city of South Pasadena. It's a small city, but as you know, and I know from using it a lot, there's a lot going on in this city. There's a lot packed into it, and there are various little communities and micro-communities, and it's not always geography. Geography matters, we know the main arteries in South Pasadena, but sometimes communities work across those geographies or those boundaries, as it were, either streets or parks or freeways, et cetera. Next slide. Okay, so this is what we heard from you last time. I'm going to give you a couple of sort of comments about this. I, I spoke, I read, Lucy was kind enough to send me some documents, and I read a lot of the stuff that, the public comment from last time. I also spoke to Doug Johnson, our president, who was the demographer. I, I will tell you, some of it's mixed, you had people show up and say, I want you to consider homeownership, and I said, no, I don't want you to consider homeownership. You, I saw a lot of mixed back. There was an issue about, down there where you see the Altos area, what really determines the Altos area? What is the hillside and what isn't? The one overriding issue in 2017 was that there was a sense that South Pasadena is small and compact enough, and you didn't really want to split up the city. And so, districts, particularly the two in the middle, were designed to try and cover a lot of the districts, or a lot of the neighborhoods, or a lot of the communities. And that was designed to give council members a responsibility for the whole. Even in the districts on the east and the west, there's a significant coverage of different stuff, and they cover some of the commercial areas. That was an overriding concern in my long conversation with Doug that pushed the, the current maps that you had. Unfortunately, with the new California Voting Rights Act, Fair Maps Act, sorry, you have to now look at the communities of interest and do your best not to split communities of interest, not to split neighborhoods. You can, but you have to have a very strong logic for it, so, so for a court to accept it. There was an issue again, south of Huntington, north of Huntington, and there was a question about, excuse me, should all the districts have a portion of a commercial district? I think I mentioned last time, in the city of Pasadena, there is a, a, a concept where everybody touches Colorado, because they want everybody to have skin in the game, as it were. You can do that as long as you're doing it without splitting communities of interest. All of this stuff has to balance well, oh, and by the way, it has to be population balanced. My advice to you would be, find a concept, find your neighborhoods that are overriding your neighborhoods and communities of interest. Find maps that fit that, if they are out of population balance, give it to us to then pinch and tuck and adjust so that it fits within the 10% population balance. The most critical part is to build from the communities. People get way too focused on the map and not the territory, and they start looking at numbers, and then when they pull the camera out, they think that's something that doesn't really look like what they really wanted to. Councilwoman Mahmoud, I think you're the one that brought up the RINA issue last time, and as I mentioned, you're, you're able to increase, to consider it, but you, you can't do it on the come. You have to have some pretty definitive evidence that the housing that you're going to build is coming in a certain area, and there's evidence thereof. Otherwise, you got to wait till another 10 years to take another crack, and the, the population will change, and you'll see it then. Any questions there? Okay, so I, I believe you all got the raw data, is that right, of, of the survey? And I, I was the one that I asked for Pepe Smith, I said, is there any way to bucket this? And this is what they came up with, which, which is startlingly dense, there's a lot going on here. I tried to say, you know, if one person mentioned it, maybe you don't mention it, but if, if you're seeing a lot of certain things, you kind of put it down there. There is a lot going on here. I know where some of this stuff is, but you can see homeowners and renters, that's a big issue frankly for South Pasadena. You need to decide if that's a, if something that you want to consider, because that really will drive where maps are, what a map looks like. I'll, I'll flip down to school districts. We just helped the school district in South Pasadena define their map. They have different functionality and different responsibilities than a city council. But they were looking at, and, school attendance zones, and they wanted to make sure that each member of the board, or each district, rather, not member, but each district, had at least one or two schools within it, or I'm sorry, school attendance zones within it. And so, we had to kind of move things around, but that's a very legitimate thing for a school district to think about, because school attendance zones are important. Sometimes cities do that because their schools are tied very much to the city. But it's up to you to decide. What else I want to mention, the Monterey Hills, again, Mission District is an important historical district and commercial district. Does, is there enough of a district there, community of interest, that you want to create where enough people live? And again, these neighborhoods that are all familiar to you, you know, how, how do you want to package them and put them together is, 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 is an artistic exercise, quite frankly. And it doesn't have to be perfect, you can pull the ones that you as a team decide make the most sense and are the most priorities for the city of South Pasadena, for this jurisdiction. Again, to reverse it out, if a judge came and said, this doesn't make sense, explain it to me. If you were to reverse that out and say, okay, here's what we did, and here's how we built it, if that makes sense and your population balanced, and you don't dilute the potential for a protected class or, or create one circuitously, then you're in good shape. Next slide. The tools, I, I have said this, and I, I'm going to say it really, really pointedly, I'm hoping all five of you and the staff do this. I've said this to many jurisdictions, this tool, once you get the maps, is an incredibly valuable tool. This tool allows you to go look at a map that's been posted, and when we present it in this forum at the next public hearing, you're going to see a PDF, you're going to see a static view with statistics. This tool, and we can do it in the public hearing, but even on its side, it's posted on your website. You can drill down to a street level. You can look at a district and all the way down to the detail and say, hey, I'm not sure what's on which side of Mission, or where Meridian goes, or where the other, or Diamond goes, or the others. It's a really, really powerful tool, and it allows you to take your current districts, overlay that with any new map that comes, and see what the adjustments are. It's a very easy-to-use tool, it takes about five minutes to learn, and I would encourage you to really use that once the maps get going. Next slide. We have something called paper maps, they are loaded onto your, it took us a little while, but they're now loaded. Residents and/or others can go in, and they can use this tool with a pencil, a crayon. They can go in and draw areas that they think are significant, they could draw a full map or a partial map. Whatever they submit to the city, we will consider as valuable feedback. If it's a full map, we will then process it, put it into an actual map, a PDF, that you can look at, and it'll become a map to look at. If it's a partial map, we won't, but we will take it as feedback to say, wow, these people really did think that that community of interest was important. The next slide will show you, if you don't want to do the math, you can connect the paper district with, the paper map with an Excel spreadsheet, plug in the numbers, and you can then, Excel lets you do the map, and you can see how population balanced you are. It'll show you if you're plus 5%, below 5%, et cetera. So some people prefer this, and again, even as virtual as we are and as technological as we are, we get plenty of paper maps from people that just want to pull it off and draw it and send it in. So, but the, the next slide shows you a relatively easy online tool. It's called Dave's Redistricting. It is simple to learn, it is simple to use, and you just click, click and drag, you can erase, undo, move things around, it is posted, it'll be posted on your website, and it's very, very easy to use if you prefer an online tool that's simpler. And then the last one, you guys wanted the, the big gun. This is called MapTitude. This is the system that we use when we process maps. When we get one from Dave's or a paper map, we push it into MapTitude, create a map, it does the statistics. If you are someone who's inclined to use a heavier caliber tool, then this is the one for you. So you have, and it's in many languages. You got a lot of tools at your disposal, we've seen many jurisdictions use all kinds of stuff. It's up to your community to, to figure out how you want to do it. Next. At this point, the, the part of the public hearing that's most critical for me, I'm happy to answer questions and clarify things, but we really want to hear from the public and/or you based on either the one, the, the communities of interest that have been determined already or submitted, as well as others that you think are critical, and send us away. The next hearing, by the way, we hope to have some draft maps for you. From the community and/or from us, we will submit some for you to consider various configurations. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ken. Councilmembers, any questions? Mayor Protem?
No, I'm just taking it in.
Diana?
It's a lot.
No?
No, thank you very much for the presentation.
Councilmember Donovan?
And I, well, just real quickly, I assume all of the maps, all the information, Ken, that you referenced is at this website, links to everything? Thank you.
Councilmember Donovan, or is it Zinimer, any questions?
Yeah, it's just a lot to, to digest.
Yes. Okay, we'll open it up to the public comment.
Mr. Mayor, may I just comment on, on that part?
Yes.
It, it is a lot to digest. I, I would say, have your communities, your constituents, move them into it. Once they start to feel it and touch it and move things around, it becomes a lot, a lot more familiar, like anything else. It, it's up for the council, though, you have to keep the rules of the road in mind, because the decision at the end comes to you. But I really, really would encourage you to push your residents into just feeling it, touching it, and, and asking as much questions. It, it feels like a lot, but once they get it, it's, it's, it's a lot more attainable than you think. So, enough said, sorry.
Thanks, Ken. Christine, are you going to be checking for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, and we do have a couple of hands raised.
Go ahead.
We'll begin with Ms. Yvonne LaRose again.
Thanks, Yvonne, for sticking around, go ahead.
Thank you. I am remembering that we had I am remembering that we had, I guess, sessions and presentations and surveys regarding the strategic plan. And there were projections about population growth, movement of central buildings and questions about whether we have sufficient space for expansion of our existing elementary, elementary schools. How will this redistricting dovetail with that strategic plan? Or do we need to be concerned about the two and how they will mesh? Did I leave you in a fog?
Is that your question?
Well, actually, the first part was, the last was rhetoric.
Why don't you finish your whole?
That was it. How do, how does the redistricting mesh with the strategic plan or do they meet up at all?
Thanks, Yvonne. Ken, we did in December met for, you know, planning our long-term goals and objectives for the city of South Pasadena. And it is part of the regional housing needs assessment there, we're trying to comply. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, to the extent that the strategic plan identifies areas that you could determine are communities of interest and/or the growth as it relates to Rena. Like I said, you can consider those in terms of where you want districts to be represented, if that makes any sense. The strategic plan, I haven't seen it. I will certainly take a look at it and see if and how it would make sense. But if you are pushing a plan that will, within 10 years or a couple of years, whatever it is, you can see a certain measure of growth that's coming. Not only will that potentially dictate a community of interest or a neighborhood, but it also could dictate numbers. As I said, you need to be pretty sure that that growth is going to be there. A plan is a plan, but you know, permits pulled and shovels and ground is more determinate, if that makes sense. Did I get, did I get at the question?
I think so. When you do look at that, can you also look at our housing? We're doing our housing element again, zoning, downtown, you know, specific plan. So all these kind of happening in parallel tracks.
The next public comment is Josh Alberkson. Go ahead.
Hey, so if you look at the maps we have today, the north, south, two, one, two and three are really of domination. The demographer said that it was done because the people wanted to keep all the parts, but it was actually because at the time, three of the city council people lived north of the 110, two of them on the same block. So they actually wanted to cut the districts so that they all had own individual district to run in. Councilmember Steinmer's district actually includes a golf course, no homes, and then goes into three houses to get that former city mayor's home into it. I believe that when you create these next maps, that you should focus on making sure that people could walk to their councilperson's house. Like the people who are living in the north part of District Two and the south part of District Two, those people are three miles apart and they have vastly different concerns. I believe that Districts Four and Five are very compact. They fit the communities, like the place south of Huntington. They all have the same needs and I believe that District One, where Zinerly is, the Monterey Hills is pretty well shaped. I think you should keep those and make Monterey Hills more whole so that Monterey Hills has its own city councilperson and then divide up what is now two and three in a north-south manner so that anything north is in two and anything south is in three, so that people could actually be in the same neighborhood as their city councilperson, rather than how it was done four years ago where the maps were literally drawn so that each city councilperson didn't have to run against each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Next is W. John Martin.
No pneumonia or traumatic injury.
Mr. Martin, go ahead. Mr. Martin, you're muted. I'm not sure if you're trying to talk. We can come back to Mr. Martin. Anybody else?
Yes, we have someone with an individual named John. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, John, please go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, Ken, I think I emailed you yesterday about some of the things I ran into, some problems I ran to with your population total numbers to the DRA numbers, the David redistricting app. And some of those numbers on the Davis redistricting app were kind of off. I also noticed on the Excel spreadsheet, the population unit numbers and the map, the paper map with the population number were also off because they weren't, some numbers were skipped. I'm a little concerned with this because I think residents are going to have a hard time to be a little confused, like seeing, everything is a little confusing. The redistricting map and the population number map, I think it's fine now, but the other one, I'm a little concerned for confusion. And I think that's basically it for me.
Thank you, John. Much appreciated. Ken, you want to address that at all?
Sure. So the paper maps, we take what we get from the census. We look at the district using census blocks and we create, we physically create the maps. Sometimes we don't use as many pieces of the puzzle because we're creating blocks that make sense for the whole city. In the end, the overall number should be the same and/or darn near close. Frankly, the fact of the matter is, the census is, the census data from the state of California and the feds didn't really match, mesh. There was a sort of a jurisdictional challenge. But we take it, we create it. It is not exact on the paper maps, but I will tell you, the differences are relatively immaterial. I know it's important and I know people want exact numbers, but because we create it separately, it won't match perfectly. On the Dave's map, John, I think I explained, I sent you a note back explaining something similar.
I got that.
Okay, so on the paper maps, again, the fact of the matter is, what we're looking for the large chunks, when you get down to the, you know, the fives and the tens numbers, if it's your street, I get it, you know, we're looking at a street or your house, but the numbers themselves, I wouldn't get too hung up on that.
You do understand that, so the numbers, so don't worry about the numbers? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, no, I, again, in the context of what I said, is the numbers are not going to match perfectly because we take what we get from the district, from the census. We physically create that paper map with all of the little census blocks and they're different, but we do it so that it fits the overall city in a way that sometimes, sometimes we combine two census blocks, sometimes we move things around so that it fits, but it's not going to be exact, but it'll be really, really close. And John, I'm happy to, again, you and I've emailed, I'm happy to work with you on it if you have a specific item.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for the response and the email too. I really appreciate that, Ken. Thank you so much.
Send me a note anytime.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me, Michael.
Thank you, John, very much for taking the time to go through it thoroughly. Appreciate it. Did Mr. Martin come back on yet?
I'm going to try again and ask him, Mr. Martin. Go ahead and begin.
You're muted?
He does not appear to unmuting himself. He has the ability. Ms. LaRose raised her hand and she still has one minute left that she didn't utilize from her original public comment.
Ms. Rose, go ahead if you want to.
Apologies. I clicked the icon and didn't realize it.
Thank you. Christine, anybody else for public comment on this issue?
We do not have any more hands raised.
Okay, do you want to give Mr. Martin one more shot? Mr. Martin, it's your last chance. If you want to unmute yourself, you have three minutes, provide some public comment. We welcome it, encourage it. Okay, thank you. City manager, Ken, what do you need from us tonight?
Armin, you want to go or you want me to go?
You can go if you'd like.
Okay, no, look, we're trying to make sense out of a lot of pieces of data. You've heard a little bit from members of the public. I would suggest two things. If you have any other overarching, given the comments today and/or your own sensibility, any overarching things that you'd like us to consider. Now, I could go to the strategic plan and the zoning plan and all these things. There's so much in those plans that it's, it would be an overload for us to try and draw a map because the functionality and purpose of those documents is different than this. You have to keep this in mind. The purpose of this exercise is to identify the representational quality of a democracy. It's not for zoning, it's not for strategic plan. It's to create the boundaries of who you are representing. It's a little bit different. So it would help me to do two things. First, to get some overarching guidance, because if we're going to draw maps, we'll take some of the comments we heard and we'll look at the survey, et cetera. The second thing I would ask of you is to, Ms. LaRose's comments notwithstanding, that we're busy, I would ask you to go get your constituents involved. I would ask you to have them show up, have them speak up, have them come to the workshop. They get emails from the city. They're getting the blasts, but I know from my councilperson here in Pasadena, if I got an email from my councilperson that said, we need you to show up at this thing, that would be different than a general blast. And so I would ask you to encourage your residents to show up and have their voice be heard. That helps us in the end and gives you a lot more to work with.
Councilmembers, he's looking for maybe some suggestions or thoughts based on testimony today and maybe some of the prior surveys. Councilmember Mahmood will lead it off.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one brief observation. At this point, our city consists of roughly 50% rentals and we have rentals sprinkled within each district. And I really think that's healthy. And I think if anything, given the Rena numbers that we have been assigned, together with the fairly significant request for new construction of ADUs, I anticipate that rentals are going to continue to be sprinkled throughout our districts. And I really think that is healthy for our city.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Evelyn, nice your hand.
Yes, this is for Ken. We observed that Villadell Ray, I have west of Villadell Ray and Jack has east of Villadell Ray. Now, the constituents were asking if they could belong to District One or all to District Two instead of splitting the street into two. Would that be possible?
It depends where the census blocks are. Sometimes a census block was right down the street and we can't split census blocks. Sometimes it goes on one side of the street. And again, this is where that interactive map, councilwoman, this is where the interactive map really matters. You can go in right now and look at your, your district and see where the line is and that's very, very helpful.
Thank you.
You have any thoughts? Go ahead. Councilmember Donovan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out something, Evelyn, too, that I know what she said about that and it's always been strange, Villadell Ray one side, the other side. But it also happens on Fremont with John's district combined and it covers longitudinally or miles wise, about the same area. And the same problem also happens in Meridian. Again, quite a ways, one side of the street's John, one side of the street's mine. So it's not, it's not unique to that one street. So I didn't look at the other parts of the map. So while I'm on here, this is not the first time I've looked at it. And I think that with Ken's help tonight, he's kind of clarified a few things for me. Now, I mean, it's going to make it easier to go over it again, but it's hard. You move something from one place, you got to put it back someplace else.
That's right. I would say again, too, so Councilwoman Mahmood made a comment and, you know, about the rentals. That came from one councilperson. It would really, really be important for the council to say, as a council, that yeah, that's an important value for us as a council and we are going to make sure that we're focused on that. In other words, getting, getting the council to lay out some main priorities and agree to them. As you could see with all of the surveys, you could list a whole bunch of stuff and then what do you have except a whole bunch of stuff? At a certain point, it's got to congeal and get to some priorities that you want to drive your maps. I can certainly look into the items that Councilman Donovan and Steinmer just made reference to, you know, where it's split. That's a technical issue. I could certainly look at that and see if we can do something. But the larger issue is to pull the camera back and see where, what the values are and what you're trying to accomplish in a broader scale.
And I, and I heard Councilmember Mahmood's comment and I looked at it from a different set of eyes and I didn't agree with what she said, but I do think what she said is important, that the, that the rentals and non-rental areas, it should be mixed. Okay, and that part of it I agree. But the, you know, I was looking at her, as Councilmember was talking, I was looking at her district, you know, I'm familiar with almost all the streets and that. I don't think so, but looking at the map, you can't tell what a rentals one are.
Oh, Jack, I have a lot of rentals on Huntington, a lot more than you would think. And we also have townhome developments, many of which are rental. It's really surprising. You would think my area is primarily single-family residences, but because the, because the multifamily housing is so much more densely compacted, it adds up a lot faster than you would think.
You know something, as soon as you said that, I, in my mind, I thought, honey, I said, son of a gun, she's right, you know? And I'm thinking of Mission on the other side of Orange Grove going down towards the Royal, you can't tell, but they're, those apartment buildings are more than a block deep and there's hundreds of units in some of them. And when you go past Trade and Jones, you say, oh, there's very few units here. No, it's like you in the Huntington. It's hidden unless you know the, and I didn't even think of that. Unless you know your district, you do, you can miss the rentals.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, yes, I'd like to know how you guided the school district through the, you know, their, the principle that they used was that each, each board member district trustee area should touch two of the elementary school catchment areas. But yet at the same time, you could define an elementary school catchment area as it's, as a community of interest. So were they dividing that or were they investing two trustees minimum with representing that community of interest? How did that discussion go?
To be frank, there was not a lot of public discussion. There was minimal input. We took their priorities. We drew three separate maps, different types of maps. You could see the differences. If I could show you, I would. And in the end, they looked at them. There was one of the maps, if I remember correctly, Mayor Pro Tem, one of the maps did not, had four of the five had two catchment areas and one didn't, and they discounted it. They basically said, no, that's a really important priority for us. Now, as, here's a really good example to what Councilman Donovan was talking about. You pinch here and you take here. That map was a really compact map. It was contiguous and really compact. The map that they chose, seemingly on the face of it, was less compact and it looks a little bit more circuitous, right? But it, but it hits all the other marks. And so if somebody said, well, that doesn't make any sense, well, here's how it makes Well, here's how it makes sense. We believe that a school district should have X, Y, and Z. And that's a really good example of how they have to play with each other. You can't just say, that's the principle and no matter what, that's what we're doing. In this case, they had two maps that had, everybody had at least two school attended zones. And then they chose based on other stuff. There was a balancing issue and all of that. But I will tell you, again, not for lack of trying, but they did not have a lot of public input. It was their decision. And in the middle of it, if you'll recall, there was a vacancy. So when we first engaged them, there was vacancy and then they appointed somebody. And so we had to sort of figure all that as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So I'm envisioning, you know, there's two categories. One of a basic principle of we all, all five districts should really be invested in this kind of, this kind of area. It could be commercial and it might even be, you know, multifamily units or rental populations. But I'm not sure that's, there's a community of interest that's being divided there. But it could be a principle that we could use to make sure that every district and every representative is invested in that particular, that type of resident. And then that type of land use being the commercial. And then there's other, then there's another category where there aren't distinct and defined neighborhoods, which really should stay together. And then the exception to the neighborhood stay-together rule might be if you have, let's say, a transportation corridor, right? That you want two councilmembers to be invested in protecting, which could be Meridian. You know, that's why I'm on one side of Meridian, Jack's on the other. And so they can complain to two councilmembers and get a little bit more traction because of the Meridian corridor. So, you know, that might even be an exception to the neighbor rule. So anyway, I'm just trying to process all of this. And there's many different levels that are playing, interplaying together.
You bring up a good point, too. Some people would rather have a community of interest and have one representative. And they have, they want their voice and everybody behind that person. Some would rather do sort of what you just said. No, we would like to go to two people. But when you do that, you dilute your political power as it relates to votes, right? You have to decide. Sorry, you're on mute.
Only assuming that there's actually conflict with other parts of your district.
Yes.
In other words, that there's trade-offs within a district. And so if you divide a community of interest that has an adverse interest to another part of your district and they're the smaller voting block, then you're not going to pay attention to them. But I don't, if that's not on the table, in other words, there really is no trade-offs, then you could make an argument that an important corridor that has a very active neighborhood component could be represented by two councilmembers and that might be more efficacious for them.
Right, so that would be an important principle for you all to nod and say, yes, we want to do that, either in a particular area or in general. But you've laid it out really, really well. That's how it plays. You have principles and then you have neighborhoods and communities of interest. And then, oh, by the way, it has to be population balance. So if you start where you're talking about, give us that, tell us what you want. And then we can go to work and try and create maps and your citizens are going to create maps. Then when you get a citizen map and you can say, it's a great map, but it doesn't follow the principles we as a city council want to follow, then you have at least some parameter against which to measure, right? It's quite a creative process, but it's tough.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmembers, I'll go for a moment. Ken, as I said, he did a public comment and I heard Josh. He actually brought up some good points. And I see four, which is my district, compact. I see Diana's district compact.
Yep.
And I'm thinking what he said is actually makes sense. I mean, if you go across Monterey Road, kind of splitting the city. And John, what's the neighborhood of interest you live in? I've never been to your house. You don't give me exactly the area?
Well, yeah, I'm south of the high school. So I'm in the, I'm in back of Holy Family.
Back Holy Family, okay.
So I have, and at that point, it's a narrow district. At some point, it goes from Fair Oaks to Meridian. And then it narrows to Fremont to Meridian. And Diana comes all the way over and touches Fremont. And then I've got Huntington all the way south. So it's a very strange district. It's the very south boundary. I go all the way to Charlie's Trio, you know, knocking on doors. And I go all the way up to Columbia Avenue, knocking on doors.
Wow, so that's why I would agree with Josh. I would even, I would use Monterey Road almost as a split through the city from the east end of Garfield, where Diana IR, all the way across basically to the Arroyo. And he made a good point. You've got that little strand of the Arroyo that should be, you know, up top. A district north of Monterey Road. You can narrow District One all around the Altos. And you could have either District Two or Three above Monterey Road and the other one below Monterey Road. And I think you'd have four compact and ultimately it would be five compact. I can see four in whatever, west of it, west of Fair Oaks is similar. And then five, whatever's west of Diana is similar. So you really have five compact districts, I think, if you did what Josh is kind of recommending. And not that almost like, I don't want to say it's Eldridge Berry, Jerrymander up there by the Arroyo, but there's a good point. It's kind of a, you know, just a few homes up there along Arroyo and the Arroyo itself and that, you know, the stables. Evelyn, go ahead.
I actually like the way it is now. Because on the hillside are all homeowners. And on the flat lands by, above Monterey Road by the Foremost Liquor, it's all apartment renters, that whole Pasadena Avenue. Half of that is mine and half is Jack's. So it's 40% renters. So it's, I think it's balanced. You know, Diana said, it's a sprinkle of everything. I have the renters as well as majority of the homeowners.
So if you took Monterey Road, kept going, and then it turns into, well...
Pasadena Avenue.
Yeah, but and Monterey Road by the Foremost Liquor, is it all that? That's your district still and that's a lot of rentals and multi-unit condos and stuff, right?
Yes, the whole Pasadena Avenue. But then Jack stops on Monterey Road. And mine goes all the way to the freeway.
And again, if we were to keep, you know, again, with respect, voters' choices continuing in office, I was just thinking, if you get north of Monterey Road, Jack's up there. John's south of Monterey Road. And keep yours intact, pretty much the way it is. But again, just don't have that little lake sticking way up there to the northwest.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. That little lake sticking out there, it's, I could do without.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we should be cautious about talking, I think, too much about making plans, about carving up. The purpose of this, this public hearing, and I see Mr. Chalkens nodding his head. The purpose of this hearing is to talk about the communities of interest, these neighborhoods, these characteristics that you want to provide versus particular routes, this street, that street, Meridian, Fair Oaks, et cetera.
Andrew, Josh made a...
Right out of my mouth, I was just going to say that. Pull the camera back and look at the larger picture. That's what I was going to say.
So question, Josh made a comment, we can't comment on his comment? You're telling me to ignore it or I can comment on it? I'm just curious.
It's been a few moments now as to what his comment was.
His comment was, should I repeat it or do you want, did you?
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so he commented that...
We're still here.
It's all right.
If you want, I'll say it.
Sorry, public comment's over.
Okay.
So Andrew, he talked about looking at the districts. He said, I think he looked at three and four and five. He said those were compact, communities of interest. He agreed with that. He disagreed with the way three and two were. And I think there's been some up and down narrow. I'm not sure what community of interest, but I think he saw if you broke them up kind of like three and four, north and south, half above, whatever streets you want to talk about it, it could be Monterey Road, whatever. North is one and south, and you've kind of contiguous. And then he talked about slicing off that kind of northwest strand above, kind of passing avenue by the Arroyo and by the stables. So that's what the comment we were commenting on.
Right, right. Nothing has been said so far that is out of bounds. It's just the emphasis needs to be more on the communities of interest, the areas, the geographic features versus, okay, now let's draw a line here, let's draw a line there.
Yep, so I'm trying to say the communities of interest south of Monterey Road, like what John was describing. You know, he talked about the area around the high school, Holy Family, Ramona, Meridian, that type of thing. And, you know, if you talk about north of Monterey Road, like in the area by the library and stuff like that, that's a different community of interest. So Diana has her hand up, then John. You're on mute, Diana, mute?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I do think it is helpful for us to ensure that each district has at least some commercial area. We're a small city, we're coming out of a pandemic. Economic development will continue to be important. So I think in devising our districts, we ought to try to include at least some commercial aspect in each district.
You're saying like Fair Oaks, Mission, Huntington?
Correct.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, thank you. I'll just say, right now, the Mission District is split. So if that is a community of interest, that is between two and three. And so one option would be to see what it would look like to redraw the Mission District as a whole. But then again, is it Mission, is that a district that you want to have two councilpeople touching? So they have an interest in it. So it really, it cuts both ways so many times. So, I mean, one approach might be the light-touch approach, which may not be popular, but would be figure out how to do a balance between Jack's district, which has fewer, and my district, which, District Three, which has the most. Because we're on the far side of the population. Is there some swapping of census tracts that could be done in the Mission District? To create that balance. And then, I know I'm getting into the weeds here, which I shouldn't, but at the same time, keeping the Arroyo area more compact and not with the Monterey Hills area, that little dog leg that Evelyn was talking about. So those might be two changes. I know we're not supposed to talk about it, but I think splitting the Mission District, that could be something we could look at. Not or not splitting it and allocating it to one or the other. I'm not so crazy about splitting it north-south along Monterey Road. Because I think that's going to, it's going to create a domino effect of lots of other things. But maybe we should have a minimalist approach and a maximalist approach. Maximalist being create as many compact districts as you can. And I saw you did that with the school district. And they ended up not taking the most compact version. And then a minimalist approach, which would be to balance out District Two and Three, eliminate the dog leg and see where we are.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Mr. Mayor, when you talked about north-south, it's exactly what the Mayor Pro Tem just said. If you did that with two and three, you would have to ooze out somewhere to go get the population that would allow that to be a community of interest, north and south of Monterey Park. But again, that would be a significant change. But I would echo what Mr. Jared said. You have to talk about it, which communities of interest are you trying to serve by that north-south? And you could say, north, it's a boundary. And it's something that you could certainly use in terms of drawing your map. If you wanted to do a minimal approach and a maximum approach, I have, I'm taking as many notes as I can. We will look at that and we'll think about that and see if we can present various options. So you can see what the maps look like.
I liked that by John's recommendation. You, Mayor?
And I saw a lot of people nodding with Councilwoman Mahmood's suggestion to have everybody have at least some commercial. So everybody was nodding to that. So I'm going to circle that as a significant piece.
Good.
It's very, very helpful.
Councilmembers, any more comments, observations, recommendations? Especially communities of interest that we might be missing that I don't see.
You sure you don't want to go to Kelly Kid's shop and just give it to him? Make him a half?
The problem is you have so many criteria. You can't be creative or you're going to call a foul.
No, but you can limit the criteria. You can limit the impact. You can do some stuff. But again, you got to call it out. So that it's clear that this is what the legislative body is calling for their maps. If you do that and it's within bounds, as the city attorney was saying, then you're in good shape.
So Ken, as you're doing this, the minimalist and larger, can you try to maybe compact it a little more in some of the bigger ones that are spread out? As you do that?
We would have to in order to get population balance. That's what's going to happen to the Mayor Pro Tem's comments. In order to get the numbers right, after you do the concepts, you have to pinch a little here and tuck a little there. It won't work otherwise. The number, the federal law, Equal Voting Rights Act is, won't work.
Thanks, Diana.
Just real briefly, I'd like to reflect upon the fact that applying districts to a small and really relatively homogeneous city such as ours is really difficult. We don't have concentrations of renters in one place and not other places. We don't have concentrations of people of a particular ethnic background in one place and not other places. And I just think it might be helpful to reflect upon the fact that we did this really under duress, under threat of a lawsuit. And so I think to the extent that we can make our districts reflect in general the constituencies that are inherent in South Pasadena, that to my mind, goes a long way to achieve what I think our residents would prefer, which is councilmembers that represent the, not just the interests of their own district, but the good of the city as a whole. And I think to the extent that we, without violating any of the legal requirements, to the extent that we can achieve districts that have a little bit of this and a little bit of that, which I think is really easy, given the small size of our city and the dispersal of the number of interests, I think we will go a long way towards achieving what I think would be in our residents' best interest. I may be wrong. I guess this is a test to see by throwing out this concept if they agree or not.
I would only say you did it maybe under duress, but you also did it with a different set of rules. The Fair Maps Act changed the rules and added layers that you now have to consider. And you did it with the notion of trying to have an overall feel. But now you have to then look at communities of interest and it's required. And in some regards, the north-south districts cut across. And so I think what you said is exactly right, Councilwoman. It's right, but there's a new set of rules. And so you just have to think about them. I think we can get creative and let us take a crack at some maps and see if we can get some options for you.
Mayor Pro Tem has his hand up again.
I'm sorry, I'm getting confused. Community of interest should stay together or they can be split? Or if they're not important enough, they can be split? But if they're important, they shouldn't be split? I'm trying to, how do you, how do you, how do you grade a community of interest for the purpose of the federal, we're talking about legal compliance now, right? So how do you know when you have split, unlawfully split, a community of interest? That has a nebulous definition to it. You define what it is, but then you can't split it. But then you could split it if it doesn't meet some federal criteria.
Correct, what you just said is correct. Now, that's exactly right. So it's in order of priority. In other words, if you had communities of interest and it made it non-contiguous, you wouldn't be able to do that. You have to have it contiguous. So in other words, that's why I said community of interest is more of a term of art. And you can split them, but you have to have a really solid reason. But you have to have a really solid reason for doing that. And, and if your reason is you want to have, as the councilwoman was saying, you know, you want to have a mixture of commercial, everybody have a piece of commercial, you can, you can, you can carve that way. You just have to have a really strong logic set underneath it so that it makes sense. But you, the way you just described it is exactly right, which is why this is not that simple. But, but I would start with the, as you're doing right now. These are really good principles you're laying out. And I've got some ideas that I'll check with the staff about sort of neighborhoods, a little bit more refined. And I think we can go after it. But I, I think staying at the higher level right now is, is the most important thing.
One of the issues that comes up is we've been trained for 55, 56 years of Voting Rights Act-type litigation, to think of communities of interest only being in ethnic terms. And now with, with the new law, it's a little bit broader than that.
Yes. That's right.
Councilmembers, any more last comments before we move on? Ken, wait, I see now. Are you okay, Ken, with what we've given you?
Honestly, yes, it's a lot. But I, I would prefer this. There are some, I got to tell you, there's some jurisdictions that you just get, you know, five or seven blank stares. And honestly, it's, it's not, not helpful or thoughtful or rich. This is really good. We'll, we're going to have to get after it and, and see what we can come up with. And again, I would have you serve your communities and your, your constituents and get them involved.
Ken, maybe sometimes when people don't come, maybe they're really happy with the way things are going.
That could be. It could be. Absolutely. So, no, I'm good.
Mayor, if I can just reiterate, we do have the January 31st workshop. We are going to be promoting it in the next coming weeks. Everything, including today's meeting, will be available for people to view on the redistricting website, along with all this information and every public comment that's received to date.
And we're going to be demonstrating the maps, the map drawing tools at that workshop.
Lucy, what time will that workshop start?
It will be at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And it will be conducted virtually.
Great. Staff, any more comments before we move on? Or Ken?
No, you know, we could be here until midnight. There's so much to comment on. I mean, you know, every time you look at it, you could come up with a different scenario. I mean, it's just, and, and all the comments I've heard from my fellow councilmembers, every one of them had merit. Unless you're left, listen a little bit longer, well, maybe not, maybe not. So, no, everybody had, that's a good input. Just, if you say anything before moving on, Mayor? Yeah, there's a lot, but we keep, I don't want to be here till sunrise. So, time to move on.
Okay. Armani, you okay?
I'm okay. This is great discussion. And I just wanted to take a moment and thank Ken, because he did a phenomenal job in walking us through this exercise.
Great job, Ken, really.
My pleasure.
Well done.
You guys have a great evening. Yeah, I hope you don't mind. I'm not going to stay for the rest of the council session.
Enjoy yourself at the kids' place, okay? Enjoy yourself, Ken.